Any information on time?
They did get their time to.
All right, let's, let's call it to order. All right, um, next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they wanted to discuss and or pull off of the consent agenda? All right, um, I do, there is one thing to talk about, sort of a side issue related to the village of over police, but we can leave that this is only the interaction agreements. And so, um, do you have a motion? Go for a second? Any discussion on anything?
I, I just had a question. The music teacher, is that? Because there was music teacher in each school?
Of course.
Definitely has one resignation.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor? Any guests? All right, nothing in correspondence? For present report? A couple of things I wanted to talk about with the latest from the governor. The open meeting or open, yeah, open meeting up. Being sort of waived until January. What's board feel about meeting in person versus going back to running Zoom meetings? I mean, we, we still have and will have the, the ability for someone to tie in to a meeting. But I'm curious as to what the board's thoughts were around going back to remote. So, anybody?
I should qualify probably saying that every one of us have the app, have the option of going remote individually for whatever, you know, for a reason here. Feel well, or if you have, you can always go remote on your phone. I think what Perry was talking about is having higher board meetings saying, instead of saying, I can't make it physically tonight, I'm going remote. And just, and everybody's here. You want to do the complete remote.
Or, I mean, it, we can, the, the nice part about this, I, well, I thought, Kelly, Cheryl, was that if you were at work and couldn't get here in time, in the past, you're supposed to publish your address. And, and first of all, I mean, if you're at work, I can't imagine they're gonna appreciate you publishing their address for people to join you at a board meeting. Um, but, but, so we're not really sure if this gets rid of that requirement or not. Uh, but more, more to the point is what Howard said is, do we, do we want to go back to remote meetings? I mean, I hate to kick our audience out.
But it is a lot more convenient, obviously, but I mean, you know, part of me says the school's in session. We should be here. And there's part of me saying, are we just adding to potential, you know, protection if we're all here in one room? So you can look at it both ways.
Well, I think.
With the work factor.
I think the public is, I mean, I'm hoping the reason that people aren't here is because the public has found it handy to be able to do this from home. So, I mean, is there anybody that would feel that we should go back to remote?
And then they will, then we'll continue to meet in public and the board, it's almost like, well, we can quarantine away. According to the G O L and meetings.
This is my understanding, though, if you decide to do remote, then you still have to publish if the board is meeting in person.
If we're choosing.
You're right. Yes, yeah.
So we stay in person and unless it would change by state.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. All right, uh, Howard?
Okay, uh, just to follow up on the legislative liaison. Part of my duties, I, I did telephone conversation after my last random break. In fact, to me, I was contacted by Senator Gillibrand's office and I was contacted by Congressman Delgado's office. I did hold a telephone conversation with Ben Lee Wuritz, who's a senior legislative assistant with Senator Gillibrand. Technically based out of Washington, D.C. I did that on August 26th. We had a nice conversation. So now I made inroads, we have a contact. Uh, for whatever good that may do, uh, we have a contact now in the senator's office. Uh, dealing now with, on a local level with Congressman Delgado's office. I had a telephone conversation on the afternoon of the 26th with Chelsea Lynn, who's also a senior legislative aide with Congressman Delgado. And she's also based out of his Washington office. She's in charge of education. Educational. And, uh, we had nice conversations and I believe they are contact people should come, come up that we need, we need their help or input on. So at least we got some action there.
Um. Superintendent report? Yeah. I mean, I'm assuming. Yeah, no, I was, that was supposed to be for this. I mean, I'm assuming that, um, you know, the mask requirement for the kids came out of the state now, so you know, all the discussion and decision we made since kind of. But we also should think about, right now, it's a mask inside building. We want to see about whether or not we have to wear a mask at, at these board meetings. I mean, if we're making the kids do it and the teachers do it, we should probably do it, but uh, I wanted to add, thanks for bringing up, and I wanted to ask what the board thought about. Whether it's, this is too much or not.
Personally, I think we should, that's.
I think we're saying keep me too much.
We're in the long term.
I can't see tonight. And if, if we sat six feet apart, not saying, would we be able to take them off?
No, no, we'd have to really have it, because we're in the building and if you look, the sign says when you enter the facility, you have to have a mask on. So I just wanted to know if anybody in the board, this, this was too much or, yeah, whatever.
Well, I don't like the idea, obviously. I don't like the idea for the kids, but uh, it is a safety requirement and, uh, we have to set the standard. We, and we are the same as every canoe in the member that walks through the door. We are not above them. Uh, yes, we need to wear masks. And I miss company to see people facial smirks or light up of eyes when they think of something, uh, clearly. It is a hindrance and if people find it a hindrance, they can, if what they miss find it a hindrance, they can fake it over. So, yeah, of course, we, we need to set the standard and the standard for everybody, so.
I agree.
All right, good. All right, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Just a quick shout out to all of the staff that was here with us um, working side by side and making sure that our, our buildings and our programs were ready for opening for today and tomorrow for all of our Blazers' arrival. Um, we had a barbecue, a staff barbecue that the administrative team hosted. We had homemade potato salad and homemade mac and cheese. And then we had Steve at the grill. We had cowboy beans and oatmeal cookies and hamburgers and hot dogs. And it was just super nice. It was a beautiful day. We're out on the sports complex and we probably had about 40 people there. So it just, it was just a thank you um, for all the good work that people were doing throughout the summer. So it was a nice, I think it was very much appreciated. Um, and we'll hopefully do it again in the future. It was just a nice way to see people across buildings. That's what was appreciated. Not only the good food and the good growing, but just to see each other across buildings was so nice.
And so far, no negative feedback on the grill work.
It was all positive. He was there from the beginning until the end. He would not leave. So thank you.
Do you like run out for parties or anything?
I would, I would be lying if I said that me and Elliot are in the process of starting a little business. It's called. Myself, Elliot, Lexa, Tara, we might have something going on. Stay tuned for a later date.
Call the roast it out.
On the professional development front, we had our conference day. We had all of our staff in person today. Sessions included mood meter, curriculum mapping, faculty meetings. Gordon and Gillingham, which is, was it, I think there were 24 attendees at Alden for that session, for about two hour session, three hour session, which is amazing. And then on the 30th and the 31st, we had our new teacher orientation. So we had seven, 10 new teachers, including two second year teachers, because last year we weren't able to have an in-person orientation with them due to pandemic. So it was nice to see them there as well. And topics that were included in their sessions were curriculum mapping, IXL, a Google classroom, they had a technology and business orientation. Um, so that was super nice for those two days. They got to know each other and kind of got an overview of what the expectations are of the school district. On the school, any questions there? On the school food services, uh, just a reminder that both breakfast and lunch are free to all students and the menus can be found on the website under food services. There is a supply chain, um, challenge this year. Uh, we are all experiencing a national, nationwide food shortage, supply shortage. And that may impact our menus depending upon what the, the food availability is or accessibility. It may change our menus last minute. So Holly's trying to work on, um, keeping them up to date and making sure that parents are aware of changes. But sometimes you just might not have, um, we might not have time to, to get to you in a timely manner. So we apologize to families, um, in advance. And then we are short of food workers. We're looking for school food workers. So if you know of anybody who's interested in, um, applying, please let them know. They're great hours. It's a great team. They're the same hours as of your children. So it might work for some people that you know in the community, some of our parents, that send them our way if they're interested.
Is that, is that the shortage due to people we lost or is this additional restrictions or controls or something we put on the cafeteria service?
I believe three people have left. You saw one in, um, in the agenda. So she's trying to replace people who are, who have left for various reasons.
Laura, quick question on the, uh, the lunches. It does, it is free for all students, but you still, everybody still has to fill out the form?
Yes, yes.
Now, I believe the link in the original email or on the website takes you to the menu. Someone had asked me about that, so just check that out. As they said, well, it says it's free for all, but you still have to fill out the form. And I said, I think you do.
Yeah, for a number of reasons. There are benefits as a flyer that kind of lists the benefits. And also I'm sure we'll have to do it for state reporting at some point. So, so rather than going back, backtracking, stay ahead of it.
And breakfast is free. It's also free for, both breakfast and lunch?
Both breakfast and lunch.
Can I ask just a logistic question? Um, when they get breakfast, like it's a grabbing down. So do they have to come in extra early? Or like say, you know, your kid gets off the bus and they didn't eat breakfast for their mom. Do they, do they like grab it and then eat it in the classroom?
That's what they do in middle school.
Yeah, I mean, each, each building is a little bit different. So here at the middle school, as they come in, it's waiting for them right here. Through the main gauntlet here where they, where they all walk through, they can grab it. And then they have a eight minute or 10 minute roughly, depending on how early they get in, about 10 minutes of home base time. So they do some stuff that can connect it. It's also a place for the meat. At the high school, uh, same kind of things. A lot of the kids will just kind of sit right in the cafeteria and eat it kind of quickly there and then head up to their home base, but they can also bring it up there. Um, at the elementary levels, I think it's a little bit different. I can't speak to it as well. But I think down there, um, a lot of the kids come into like the bus rooms that right here.
Um.
So they might need.
Some of them, if they're, they're early, can take it and they usually put a couple of tables down and like Ellen drive so that they can eat. But it's right as they walk in, um, just past the main office, there's a table. Um, and anyone with like a specially, um, prepared lunch for any like nutritional issues will be there and labeled. Um, or breakfast, rather, will be there and labeled for them and they can take it with them to their morning meeting if they're just coming in like on time. So on the opening of schools front, uh, just a reminder of the start times and end times. So we're back to pre, pre pandemic times. Where elementary starts at 8:40 and students depart at 3:30. And then secondary students arrive at 7:45 and leave at 2:45. So that was a little different from the last year. But now we're back to our traditional times. Just a pre-K and K orientations happened last week. Too much fun, too cute. I was at the pre-K one. Um, they started with welcomes and introductions and talked about transportation and what a day looks like for a pre-K. And then, um, the pre-K students went with their new teachers to their classrooms and they sat in a big circle and had a book, book or two read to them. Um, so well behaved. They went trustingly with their new teacher that they had never met. Um, it was just so nice to see. And parents took a tour and it was just a lovely time. I think it's, I'm so excited about our pre-K. And, um, it was the same format for the K and I heard it was just as successful, so.
Well, give you another one. The sixth grade orientation went great. At least the feedback I got. And I was more nervous than anybody with my granddaughter. She was all about like how the locker is laid out and how everything was explained. So, nice job.
And we, and just to tack on to that, I was gonna be important about anyway, um, ninth graders did their orientations made by the students. So kind of all of our transitions have been happening going seamlessly. Um, and we've also informally had families and students scheduled, uh, for informal orientation. So, um, you know, seventh graders who weren't in the building. Or, um, just any student that wants to get in and, you know, feel, uh, feel themselves out as they, they navigate this world. So that's been going on in the past.
Speaking of ninth graders, do, do you, uh, have any idea on how many eighth graders or did not go or continue to ninth grade here that might have went down the schools?
Well, I definitely have that number somewhere off the top of my head. I, you know, I don't know that perfectly. I can give a guess, but.
All right, it's a lot, you know, is it eight, is it more than eight? I'm just trying.
No, it's about the same. It was about the same, I think. I think give or take, you know, little standard deviation plus or minus.
One year was 13, I guess. Uh, that's, that's a big one.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it was, it was right around there. I can certainly get back to you though.
Yeah, it's like the, the numbers to make them. I was saying eventually, I guess Laurie will give us the numbers on, uh, you know, each way.
Sure. In terms of COVID-19 updates, uh, there was a memo that came out last week from the Department of Health stating that all factory, uh, all faculty um, and staff will be subjected, or subject, not subjected, subject to weekly testing, um, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. And anybody who's vaccinated can opt out. Um, they would like everybody to partake in it because it sort of shows you that, tells you the health of the school community. But of course, the vaccine is supposed to say, I don't want to, I don't want to participate in that.
So it's a mandatory for the unvaccinated?
Correct. So we met with the nurses today, just trying to wrap our heads around what that plan is going to look like. We don't have the test kits yet. We have some test kits. They have expired on August 28th, but they have been, um, extended often throughout the pandemic. So we're wondering if this, these test kits will be extended as well, or we're going to be, going to be working with the Department of Health, local Department of Health. Tomorrow we'll have more information about test kits and what, what the plan is, um, for implementation. So I will keep you posted on that.
Has legal been involved with making sure at all? I don't remember seeing anything from that.
Yes, Margo sent a, she sent a memo, um, which is very much aligned to the guidance.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
They're in the loop and.
Yeah, and to your point, Howard, once we have a plan, we'll make sure that they review it as well before implementing it. And then update, oh, football. Uh, the Dover merger. So of the nine students who initially signed up for the Dover football merger, six student athletes are currently rostered and participating. So we're very excited, um, that they will be participating. And the three out of the nine just decided not to play after all. So we're, I'm excited to go to Dover and see our athletes in action. And they've invited us over. They're just as excited, so.
So how, can I just ask, well, that, um, I know, God, whatever it was, like, do we know if, what the games will look like as far as like um, parents can go or any, anyone can go and mask? Or will, will they send us, Dover send us like?
Yes, and I believe guidance came on. I want to say they were spectator. That's what is, we're, we're allowed.
Yeah, I was just gonna miss it, but okay.
Yeah, they, they are allowed to attend as per the guidance. I just don't know if Dover is putting any restrictions in places that are tighter than the guidance that's been released.
When, when, when does the, when do the games start?
They've started in some schools already.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so if anybody wants to know, they can either call here or.
They should, and it should be posted on the athletics website.
Okay.
Um, he usually has the schedules up. And then lastly, upcoming events, we have our open houses and they are in person. Oh, sorry, gazebo. So we are working on a survey to send out to the community. Um, we're in design mode right now. We're working on a QR code on there as well as a link to our website for the survey. And the, the survey includes three components. People could say completely renovate, restore gazebo, which would be approximately $53,000. We could demolish the gazebo and restore the area to grass, which would be approximately $7,800. We could demolish the gazebo and purchase a prefabricated gazebo in its place and that we would have to cost out. So that should be coming out in the next couple of weeks to the school community to.
I think we need to, to get it. I, I really don't want to see that thing sitting there through another winter. So, you know.
Yep.
Boy, figure like this middle or early December, if we're gonna rip it down or fix it, that should be done, I would think, by the beginning of December. So however, we have to accelerate to get this. And honestly, if it comes out completely removed, restored, we should really think about, you know, putting out some sort of public funding method. Because we don't have $53,000 for the store gazebo.
If it's just gonna be replaced, you know, I would have the discussion, is that the right spot for it?
Yeah.
Because it says in its place. So I mean, I would almost reconsider that.
What would you, what would you change it to?
Uh, just location wise. I mean, I, you know, I might consider sliding it more into the Elm area where you can have, you know, live concerts for the kids and stuff and bring it more into the education side of it than kind of on the outskirts.
When you think about that field, I mean, it's a pure perfect field for it. You could put it right up there in the center. And people could sit around, the best kids could sit around like movie nights down there. But we also should be wrapping that up into capital, with a bigger capital project, if that's what we want to do. So.
Maybe you should send that out, just saying restored and rock plate in its place.
Yeah, I discussed that. Yeah, we're in revision. So that's good. Thank you. And then lastly, open houses. They are in, in person. Elm is on September 29th from 6:30 to 8:00. Alden is September 22nd, 6:30 to 8:00. Middle School is September 30th, 6:30 to 8:15. And high school is September 23rd, 6:30 to 8:15.
Is that like parents and students or just like parents?
Parents and students?
Uh, open house, just parents.
Thank you, Laura. All right, uh, capital projects.
So I believe the board all received the, uh, the memo with the timeline outline. So I don't have to read it bullet by bullet, but I just wanted to give you an overview of what we're talking about here in terms of big picture, broad strokes, whatever you want to say. So, uh, essentially, you know, the process has to start with an RFP. Uh, we want to bring an architect and engineering firm in to give us a full comprehensive assessment of our physical plants. That's all of our buildings, grounds and systems related to, uh, how, you know, how our buildings run. So that is going to be, uh, very similar in layout to the state mandated, uh, building condition surveys. Uh, it's a five year cycle, but when they steps the state into different sectors for five years, ours went from five to nine years for the first time. Uh, so it's not due again until 2024, I believe. And so we want to kind of have an interim assessment to help us, uh, plan our capital. So first thing out the gate, we're gonna need to draft an RFP, issue it out. Uh, you're gonna see just a couple of things here. So, um, there's a couple of options for us. We're, we're gonna want to solicit written proposals. We want to give our, um, potential partners at least 30 days to submit responses. Typically with these things, there is an opportunity for them to ask questions. Uh, you'll see in October 21st, it says public posting of all, of answers to all received questions. That's just to keep it fair so that if my company asks one question and Steve's company asks another question, we give everybody every answer to every question so they can bid it fairly appropriate. So we want to wrap that up. And, and again, I'm gonna use these months and years as kind of placeholders, but with things in flux as they often are, we may have to shift and, and stretch some and compress others and move. But I think we have, this, this will give you a rough understanding of, of what needs to happen in the proper sequence. So we're gonna want to pare down those, those proposals that we get back. We're gonna want a designated group of, of people to read through them, kind of pick out our finalists that we want to interview, uh, either physically or virtually. Uh, and then the board will have to decide if, if, you know, this is something that the facilities committee does as a subset of this group or if the full board wants to meet every candidate or the top two candidates. Um, I think it's an opportunity for us to really craft the RFP with the, the language of what's important to us. And it's an opportunity for us to tell people, um, that are, that are writing proposals. These are our priorities in general concept terms, you know, this, this board specifically has made reference to green energy, sustainability. Uh, we're very much focused on program and student welfare. And, and I'd love to see all these things really clearly articulated in the RFP so we get the right interest from the right potential partners. So ideally, we'd like to have that RFP process buttoned up by the end of the calendar year. Um, I, I would say that, uh, by December, January, I'd love to have a recommending body come forward with a recommendation to the board for that contract. You'll notice there's a language in here about, um, adding language to the RFP for future work. So that's something that we might want to include that just says, you know, if, if this firm is gonna come in and give us a comprehensive assessment, you know, they're gonna want to know if they have a shot at, at the actual project that comes out. And so we can have something in the RFP that says, you know, pricing structure for capital renovations. And, and typically that's a dollar amount per square footage or a percentage amount per million or per hundred thousand. So they'll say, uh, you know, and, and I'm just gonna use very gentle terms, but a firm might say, you know, for up to $5 million, I'll charge you 70%. And from 5 million and one to 10 million, I'll charge you 6.5% or, or however they scale their numbers. But we may or may not want to ask. And I would say to the board, you know, depending on how comfortable you are with that process, you may or may not want to award a contract that's inclusive of future work. We may want to just say, just give us the assessment. And, uh, when it comes time to do a project, we may or may not invite you to come back and do the work, or we may want to issue an RFP specific to that project. So we have a little bit of flexibility there, but I just want to get going to understand the options in front of me. So once we pick a perm, we have to actually do the work. So that's, uh, what, what I'm thinking would be third quarter of our, uh, school year or first quarter of the calendar year 2022, is really to get this firm, uh, boots on the ground and start digging through our buildings. I will, I've said this before and I will say it again, this has nothing to do with program. This has nothing to do with how we teach our kids or where they learn. This is simply a physical assessment of the condition of our buildings and grounds. So it's a piece of the puzzle, but it's certainly not. So it's a piece of the puzzle, but it's certainly not the whole picture. Uh, it's a critical piece of the puzzle, though, to figure out our priorities going forward. I'd like to say it'll take less than three months, but we wanted to give it a proper window to get that work done. And this will be, um, heavily involving Mike Goose and his team as they know the buildings and grounds better than anybody. We're gonna ask them to really illuminate, you know, where the problems are, where their epidemic issues have been. I would want to focus on on major cost centers for repair in the last five to ten years. What are the things that we keep putting Band-Aids on? Uh, what's what's nearing or approaching or well beyond end of life, those kind of things. And and again, for those that are unfamiliar with this process, the assessment looks at every single structure, system and component. And they're gonna give you a a couple of numbers. They're gonna give you an estimated range of end of life. So they're gonna say that this, you know, the windows in this building are gonna, you know, approach end of life in five years or fifteen years ago. You know, let's let's be honest.
You gotta say.
Um, and they're gonna say that for everything, for your HVAC system, for your firewall system, for your intrusion alarms, for your septic systems, your weld pumps, all those things. They're gonna come back and say this stuff is gonna last X years. And we estimate in current present day dollars in your construction costs, which is roughly a fraction, roughly half of the total cost. It's gonna cost us this much to replace it or or renovate. And so, once we get all that information back, we'll be able to have a list of these things are gonna go bad in three to five years. These things are gonna go bad in five to seven years. These things are gonna give us seven to ten years. And we're gonna focus on the near term stuff and start building out our project based on some of that information.
But they're they're gonna, things of topics like mold are going to be addressed. I mean.
Well, that's not entirely accurate. I'm gonna question off, but mold is not a building condition issue, but HVAC systems is.
Right.
So what they're gonna tell you is, and and this is important to know, this HVAC system in this building was renovated in two thousand thirteen. They're gonna give you an estimated life expectancy based on that construction of that system. It does not include augmenting or modifying that system. It's a cost of replacement that if we have a mold issue, a humidity mitigation issue, an indoor air quality issue, that goes beyond the condition of the system. That goes into indoor air quality and build of health. And that's a next level design piece that we engineer and the architects would have.
I just want to make sure that issues that we've had, I mean, this mold thing has been a contin- continuous issue for the last, what, four years?
Certainly.
You know, it just now, thank God, it hasn't come back to, you know, where it was three years ago, two years ago, whatever it was. But, you know, to me, it wouldn't take that much to have that all happen again if we don't do something.
And and I I speak from obviously a a sensitive place with that because I did this in a previous district. But we use this information to design a system that was specifically engineered for humidity mitigation and mold prevention. And that went beyond an in-kind replacement. It was actually a full system redesign. So in that instance, we had unit ventilators like the one sitting behind our board members by the window. And the engineers determined that that's not really the best way to address, uh, humidity that fosters mold. And so we went with a whole different system, but we used the cost of replacement as a baseline. So, for example, in that instance, it was around one point eight million dollars to replace what we had. The actual cost was of around two and a half million to really do what a building needed for that mitigation. So all things to build us up to where we're gonna need to be to make decisions on projects.
But and how do we, how are we going to feed back to, like this says, replace both steam boilers? Personally, I don't want to see us put yet more steam boilers in or non-steam hot water boilers that are burning fossil fuels.
But again.
I mean, so how do we get those, you know, design criteria or guidance or goals or what in front of these guys before they get too far down the road?
But again, they're gonna tell you how much time you have on your boilers. So as a board, this board will have to decide, and and I'll I'll use what's right in front of us as the example, like that stuff that was put in in two thousand thirteen, we're still paying. If we rip it out and replace it, we're going to have our A prorated based on the life expectancy of that stuff and the finance term of the previous project. Right? Now you as a board will have to determine if that's worth it. So if I i- if I come to you with a recommendation and I say, you know, folks on the board, we can completely update this this building system. We can improve the indoor air quality at the middle school. However, you know, we're eight years into an eighteen year finance term on on what we bought in two thousand thirteen. And again, I'm using rough numbers. I have books, but it's it's better to be close to that. Is it worth taking that fifty percent hit on our A because we're upgrading and improving the system? To your point of how we get it in front of the people, they're gonna tell you that that steam boiler is going to go bad in twelve years, for example, or five years or three years. You can decide if it's worth replacing with another steam boiler, with a hydraulic system that's more efficient, the component system, the geothermal system, you know.
But they're gonna they're gonna bring us those options, or we we then have to go out and hire another set of engineers to do that?
If it was up to me in a bubble, I would want to, that would be part of my interview process, is what kind of building systems are you replacing nineteen sixty plants with? Right? This this building plant was designed as a steam system in central. What are you as a firm doing to renovate HVAC plants? What modernizations have you been recommending? What have you implemented? What can I see and touch and feel? So, uh, for example, I worked at a building where we ripped out the giant steam boilers and we put in cyclone water heaters. Because if one water heater goes down, I'm only losing twenty percent of my capacity versus fifty percent of my capacity if I lose one of them. So there's different tools of thought. I would want an engineer who specializes in in green technologies to tell me what's state of the art, what's gonna get me off of fossil fuels, what's also gonna allow me to make heat from September first, June thirtieth? Because even if it's unlikely, I have to do it by law, right? And 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 so part of what I would like to see in the interview process is that dialogue. I want those people to come in and pitch what they can do, what they have done. You know, it's kind of like asking, uh, you know, don't don't just paint me a picture. I want to see what you did. I want I want to talk to the people you did it for and see how they're how they're experiencing. Uh, after the fact. So I think we can, we can start to tease that out very early, uh, in terms of identifying the right partner to bring us on information. So, uh, that's, all that is very technical and 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 you'll see that in parallel here, um, you know, when I said January to June, is comprehensive review of existing plans and reports, uh, intercommittee planning. So this is, this is the coherence piece, right? Because the building condition stuff is very technical and we are a school district. And the technical nature of our buildings is secondary to our job, which is to educate children. So I would be remiss if I didn't have this as, I I almost wanted to highlight it, put it in bold letters because I feel it's that important, you know. This board has been so great with asking us for piecemeal plans and processes. And I've been here in into my second year and, uh, I I I really love how this board is so attentive to, you want to see updated tech plan. Want to see a long range financial plan. You want to know what's happening with food service. You want to understand curriculum mapping and data movement through the district. I mean, there's been so much com- uh, compartmentalized interest. If we're gonna do something that's gonna be a multimillion dollar investment in our children's future, we have to pull all those plans together into a cohesive package that makes sense for prioritization. Because un- unless I know exactly what the, uh, what Mr. Cabello's intent for this room is, if I'm ripping open the walls and the ceilings, how I put that back together is is gonna be completely different on how he plans on using this room. Right? And and how our our curriculum instructional, uh, team is going to leverage this space to educate kids. So me as a technical person, yeah, I can ventilate it five different ways. I can move that wall in, up, down, I can pop the ceiling open. But why? The the why has to come back to our kids. It has to come back to health and safety, instruction, education. It's gotta make a financial sense. And so I feel like while the assessment is happening from January to March, we as an administrative team have to come together and pull all these plans into some cohesive movement. Where we can then take all the piecemeal concepts, feedback, the building conditions, our curriculum plans. What do we want our kids to graduate knowing? How do we get them, you know? And 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 let's rebuild the physical structures around the intent to instruct. And not just teach the best we can with the building we've got, which just feels like a lot of districts are stuck in that in that mode. And we we want to move past it. So I would love to see us do that for the entire second semester of this school year. Uh, I'd love to walk in in June with a summary of priorities based on that cohesive planning process. Where we come to the board and we say, all right, you guys know the condition of our buildings. We had the architects and engineers share with you what needs to happen. And in what rough order it needs to happen. But this is how we marry it to instruction. This is how we tie it to what's best for kids from a health and safety perspective, from a pedagogy perspective. And with all that in consideration, these are the things we'd like to put at the top of the list. And then I think, once we have that list pared down, unfortunately, it's probably gonna exceed our means at least a little bit, but it's gonna give the board an opportunity to really drill down what the next step is. And and at that point, we start pre-referendum planning for a project, understanding those priorities. We can decide, I mean, as a board, you folks have to make decisions that that affects people's tax letter, right? So, you know, we're we're gonna have, our our business official is gonna be sitting here and we're gonna have conversations about, we can do this much work at this much dollars, that is zero percent increase to our taxpayer. And for a little bit more money, we can do this. And for a little bit more money, we can add this. And this board is gonna have to decide what you want to see included in that pro- uh, proposition.
So. But always remembering that these buildings of of the property owned by the community. And it's it's to behoove us as the elected officials for the community to make sure that we, uh, keep these buildings taken care of, to educate communities' children in the state of the art for the safest and best way possible. And that's why we rehabilitate buildings when necessary. This building is past necessary.
I couldn't agree more. And we always have to remember that for some of our kids, this is the nicest place they go all day, even in even in its current condition. For some of our little ones, this is the nicest place they go all day.
So this all ends up with us taking it to the public in twenty twenty three?
Yes, sir. So a- and and the reason for that is all this planning comes in time. I mean, if we were in a place where we've already tied the plans together, we we have an updated assessment, we could right now pick through the list and say, all right, we can afford to do this. So we're gonna do this, this and this. And we vote for a vote in May. But honestly, I I and personally, I'm just not comfortable even starting that, even if we did the condition survey by December, without all the feedback from our instructional team, from our community, from the health and safety. I just, we're rushing. And and why rush? Let's get it right. You know, this stuff has made the last thirty years. Hopefully, none of us in this room will still be here in thirty years doing what we're doing right now. I'd like to not be, like being on a beach.
We need to have it well planned out. We need to have it well explained. We're not just doing it because, you know, we like to throw money at buildings. We're doing it because these buildings are falling apart, that they don't meet today's educational standards. You know, boom, 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 why we're putting this to the public. So I'd rather, rather than try to get it out for a vote in May of twenty twenty two, and and then have things fail because people didn't really understand what we're talking about. It makes more sense to me to to push it to twenty twenty three. But the key is to get on it and stay on. Because we, in the past, we've had, you know, oh, that sounds like a great idea. A year later, so where are we? That sounds like a great idea. We need to make sure that we start, we put somebody that's accountable for this, somebody that's responsible for it, and we start checking off, okay, it's October twenty twenty one, did we, did we, did we? Um, and not let this drift because it could easily finish in September of twenty twenty three. And then we have to go to twenty twenty four to get it voted on. So.
I I agree. I think, you know, in in summary, you know, you see my additional considerations. I I would say that the boards, the the big things for the board to do as a group is to, you know, give you a a conceptual authorization to get going on the RFP, which is get that on the street and and see who wants to play with us, right? See who wants to dance. And the, you know, we collectively as a board and administration need to pick that point person, Perry, like you said, that's gonna really drive the bus home. Um, and and I mean, the the facilities committee is great, but people have full time jobs beyond their committee work. And this is something that needs to live and breathe every single day. Uh, if if this list is going to be maintained and updated and and periodic reviews brought to the board to say, okay, so this is how far along we are, a month in, two months in, three months in, to keep it, you know, at the forefront. Somebody's gonna drive that outside of the committee. It really needs to live in the district where people can touch it every day. Um, a- and then the the other thing is, we we need to start really, i- i- if this is what we want to do, then I I think, you know, whether it's conceptual optimization, whether it's just a a green light to Laura and to our team, is to start pulling these disparate plans into some cohesive process. It's gonna take a while if we do it right, we bring in all the stakeholder groups. And if you think about it, if you bring in every bargaining unit, every teacher or every building represented in the room, as we start teasing these things out, I mean, how much easier is it gonna be to get by if we actually propose this project to the community? And so many of our folks are buying in the community already. Right? So I think that's a big one, but we can get going on that. And the last piece, which is more logistical than anything else, is once we get, um, to a place where we're actually designing the project, the next partner will have to bring in a construction manager. They tend to have a much better idea of costs than architects do, uh, because they're the ones actually doing the work every day. And so I would say when we get a little bit further, like, once we get to next summer and we're looking to build our project and really drill down the numbers, I'd say no later than next summer, we we start looking at who our construction manager firm's gonna be, whether we go with our traditional one that we've had in the past, or we want RFP for that service unto itself. Uh, I would recommend keeping it separate from the architectural firms. Some firms offer to keep everything in-house. I like checks and balances. Um, a- and and I like being at the table where we have the owner representative, whether that's a superintendent, assistant superintendent. We have the architect who's designing it and the construction manager who actually builds it, all in agreement on the the movement that we're going in. It really gives you that that nice balanced approach. And that would probably be a next summer thing.
So to the board, I mean, the, uh, hopefully you've had a chance to look through this a bit, the, uh, the timeline. Um, but I'm authorizing them to get started on this. Uh, yeah, I mean, we're not sending, spending any serious money. Well, it's our money is serious, but we're not spending significant amounts of money until we actually get a plan in place. But to be.
Better now than waiting again.
That's okay.
It's not spent to to get the plan going so we see exactly what we need. Like Elliot said, who wants to play with us?
Can I ask a quick question? Um, under the additional considerations you put where the district needs to identify and charge a point person, so is that kind of coinciding with what you were saying, like the, you know, the facilities committee, but, you know, no one on the facilities committee, correct me if I'm wrong, could actually be the charge person? Because yes, we all have different jobs and stuff. So is that you? Is that some, or are we determining that is that someone in administration? Or do we not know yet? Or is that something to be determined down the line?
Yeah, I think what we need to do is, are we okay with them moving forward, getting getting this started? The very first thing I would expect at the next board meeting is, here's the person, as we used to, have a lovely saying of the throat to choke when something's going wrong. That's the person that we have out there. And have them introduced, if unless we have to go hire somebody, which hopefully we don't. But, um, have them introduced, have them make sure that, you know, they're clear on what we're expecting. And, uh, then move forward from there. But, there?
Sounds good. I mean, yeah, you you typically need, you know, a high level administrator to drive this thing home. And that serves a lot of purposes, right? You need somebody that has access to information and people who have the information. Um, you know, like I said, it's usually a superintendent, assistant, some somebody at that level. Um, you know, typically, you also want that that level of juice at the table when you're having these meetings with the architects and engineers. I mean, these these people are referred to as the owner's representative. You folks are the legal owners of the district. Um, so it's it's who you want counted at the table on your behalf to get things done.
I'd also like, I mean, I'd like to see somebody within, you know, I mean, it it great, don't, please don't get me wrong. Having administrators at the table and managers and executives and, you know, has never gotten much of a project done without having the working person that's sitting there going, hey, Steve, you were supposed to get this done by Tuesday. Is it done? When's it gonna be done? How can I? That person we we need to find and and that they need to be here.
And and that's, you know, I was that person in a past life. Um, you know, as a facilities director, I I would I would also bring in people. So like my previous district, if it was a, if we're running cables for data, I'm bringing the technology director right to the room. If we're renovating a kitchen, I'm bringing the food service director to the room. So I think even that work can be pieced out as long as you have the right person quarterback in the team to get them there. And that's why the construction manager is is critical because they're coordinating the contractor, they're pushing screws and and digging shelves, you know. So we want, we want those folks in, but that's, it's that one throat, like you said, that that point person that's gonna report to the board, report to superintendent and and keep everybody along.
Okay, so, everybody okay conceptually?
Yes.
All right. So go forth and prosper. But not too much.
Listen, sir, thank.
All right. So next meeting, we can, you guys will tell us how who's gonna do this? All right. Any other questions on the timeline of capital plan or you guys have the, you know, the latest? Any other questions on the timeline of capital plan or you guys have the, you know, the latest spreadsheet of stuff? Um, we can still go forward with our hundred and our hundred and fifty, is it hundred, hundred and fifty? We can still go forward if we have projects like that. Of course, those can go.
Yeah, those are authorized as part of the, um, general fund. So they still get their voter authorization and they can, uh, coexist in parallel. Uh, you may just want the architect that we retain to chime in on the prioritization of those smaller projects as they play in. So we don't do double work. Cause that, for example, that's like, okay, we're gonna do a vestibule. But then if the bigger project's gonna require us tearing the sidewalk out, does it make sense to do the vestibule first? Maybe, maybe not. Right?
Very good. I mean, nice job.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, next on the agenda is a second reading of the policy nine six four five. Do we have any questions or first of all, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments, questions, concerns about this policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Alright, now our new business. Um, first we have the letter of resignation from, uh, Brian Freed. Uh, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, comments, questions, concerns?
Question mark.
Um, I would like to, cause there's been some discussion, I would like to take this to executive session. Table listen till we come out. Um, I'll leave it at that. Does anybody have a problem with doing that? Alright, next is less letter of resignation for, it's like a. Uh, for the resignation of Anne Burkhart, um, do a motion?
I make the motion.
Do I have a, uh, second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
I just wanted to publicly say that Anne's been here in the building, uh, since I've been here. She's utterly fantastic. She's wonderful with children. Um, she is an absolute treat to work with. Uh, she's a wonderful person and we administer through.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Uh, resignation of Mary Ann Bridges. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Just thank you so much for her service. She came into Upton for, she was here with us eight months during the path that. Deep in the pandemic and she just always showed up. She always had, um, good advice, good ideas, um, team player. And she would be greatly missed.
She really does, I guess, have the whole.
Yeah.
This was, uh, very good. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, uh, do you have a motion on the, uh. Resignation of Carolyn Shaw? Do a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, first reading of the, uh. Policy fifty three hundred on the code of conduct. Uh, it's just a first reading. Any comments, questions? Anything anybody would like to, uh, have looked into? Okay. Alright, uh, donation from the Milbrook Rotary Club. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any comments?
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Uh, Cheryl, we're at a question period. Do we have any questions from the public?
We do not.
Okay, uh, we'll move the future agenda items. We have the next meeting, Jason coming in, uh, code of conduct, second code of conduct hearing. Um, and then we'll see, I guess, about the long-term financial plan presentations. Uh, as we move forward.
Um, in school food services.
Alright.
Would you like to add that?
Yeah, we should put that. Get that in. Yeah, I guess we get that in on the twenty first. And specifically, from my standpoint, especially where are we? Um, you know, budget to actuals. And what are the, you know, how is she making out with these, uh, food shortages?
They'll never run out of olive oil.
I heard that Walgreens now, all the, their drugstores, you can't use credit because their main servers are in, uh, Mississippi. They're under six feet of water.
You can't use a credit card? Oh.
Yeah, that's what I was told. Someone said they went there and they had to pay cash.
Wow. Is there anything else you want to know from school food services? I have budgeted actual food shortages.
Um.
Workers.
Yeah, I mean, staffing, where are we?
Yeah.
I thought we had, cause honestly, I thought we were sort of overstaffed and that we let some folks. Leave and now we're understaffed, so.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so. That time of the night, uh, do I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Are we? Are we, did you pause it?
No, not yet.